Good evening. Welcome to our December 21st, 2021 city council meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jillian Lutz from West Covina Hills Seventh Day Adventist Church. Councilman Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
Let's pray. Precious Lord, as we embark on this, the last city council session of this year, I pray your blessings upon this city. I pray that as matters of finance are discussed, that wisdom will prevail in how to deal with these matters. Lord God, as the American Legion is celebrated here, I pray there will be joy. And Lord, in the public comments, I pray that there will be listening, respect, and mutual learning from the experience. Lord God, thank you for the city that we all have the pleasure of living or working in. Please let it be a place that you cause to prosper. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please put your right hand to your heart and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Costellanos.
Here.
And I'd like to just note, Councilwoman Lopez Viado is absent tonight.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. Since there was no closed session today, there would be nothing to report. Or is there something to report? City Attorney, please.
You're correct, but I do have to report out. At the closed session on December 7th, in the West Covina v. Bicep Matter, on a vote of five to zero, the city agreed to dismiss its lawsuit and return Bicep Agreed to withdraw its denial of coverage in the Bryley action and agreed to accept coverage without reservation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that report, City Attorney. Next on the agenda is presentations. Christine Evans, please come to the front.
Testing.
Read a little bit about why you're here. During the pandemic, the American Legion Auxiliary District 18 did a diaper drive for Serenity Home, which is a foster care for abused and neglected children. The American Legion Auxiliary family came together and was able to donate thousands of diapers, baby wipes, and sippy cups. The American Legion Auxiliary District 18 has donated toys to the West Covina Police Canine Association for the children in our local hospitals when they are sick and cannot be home for Christmas. The last four years, they have sponsored three to four West Covina families during the holidays with food, a Christmas tree, toys, clothes, and shoes for the entire family. They've also handed out packs filled with food and toiletries to homeless veterans and others living on the streets. Additionally, school supplies were donated to the West Covina Elementary Schools. Anything you'd like to add?
A few words, maybe. Okay. I am just honored to be here and get this and take it back to our organization because we work so hard. There's many units in the San Gabriel Valley that support veteran families as well as community children. I am Children and Youth District Chairman, so I help all the districts in the San Gabriel Valley. And it's really nice because I personally live in Covina, but West Covina also is home as I have family members that live in West Covina. So I think the most important thing is, is we have to help all of our communities, not just one where we live. I don't know, but it's an honor to be here.
Thank you. I agree. Great words. Present this to you. Let's. We will now move on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Any emails which were received by 5:00 PM have been posted to the city's website. All emails are part of the public record. Assistant City Clerk, how many cards do we have?
Mayor, we have five cards this evening. Our first speaker is JD, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Mike Greenspan.
Merry Christmas, all those good blessings. I'm here again to speak regarding the Cameron Park Community Center, specifically the rec room. Three visits, three denials to access the rec room. I've brought it up to the attention of council twice. Each time, I've been given the excuse. First excuse that's always given, it's COVID, why you cannot use the rec room. When I point out the discrepancy in that excuse, it reverts to the gym is rented. Trying to find my place here. That's why I hate writing down things, because I get lost. On this last visit, I had the police called, and I was escorted out of the gym by the police. Now, you may ask why that would take place. I was there with my daughter, myself, my sister. And kind of expected I was going to be denied, so I asked the lady if I can record. She gave me permission to record our conversation. Of course, like I said, it was COVID, then it went to, the gym's rented out, so you can't access that. Asked for the supervisor, she wasn't available. I informed her I was recording. She said, "That's fine." I said, "Listen, do you mind if I go and record the area and go into the gym and record there?" She said, "Yeah, that's fine. It's all on recording." I walked in. Moments later, she's right behind me, screaming at me as I'm speaking to the coach inside the gymnasium who's playing volleyball on one side while there's a basketball game taking place on the other. And we're having a cordial conversation, but she comes in screaming, telling me, "I got to get out, and I also have to delete my video," to which I declined. I said, "No, I'm not going to delete the video, and I'll leave. I'll leave the gym," because she said it was a rented section of the center. As I was leaving, the supervisor shows up with her boyfriend, and they demand that I leave and I also delete the video. This too is recorded. And I said, "No, I'm not going to do that. Why don't you go ahead and call the police and have the police come, and they can tell you that I don't have to delete?" Because she kept insisting that I delete my video. Finally, the police showed up. Police said, "You know what? You don't have to delete your video, but you have to leave." And which I said, "Well, why do I have to leave? I haven't done anything wrong. I wasn't belligerent, and I was given permission to record." And the girl on video admits to having given me permission. So I'm asking, "Well, can't I just go sit over there and mind my own business? No, you have to leave." I said, "Okay, fine." Then I will leave. My question tonight is, the rec room that was promised to us when that structure went up, is it available to the community? Because that was never answered on the two previous occasions I came before you and asked about it. Is the community rec room or any other part of that gym available to the community? Because prior, pre-COVID, open court for the public was made available and was scheduled. Individuals from the neighborhood, including myself, would go in there, and we would put teams together, and we'd play on the basketball court. That doesn't seem to be available Sunday, you know, through the entire week. My other question is, why is it if others could go in there and play and rent the gym, either of the gym, as well as the conference room, why is that the rec room has been partitioned using the ping pong tables to keep the community out from? That just doesn't seem to make any sense to me. Is there a schedule available as to when the rec room is available to the community? Or is the community center strictly pay to play? You have to rent out one of those rooms in order to actually even go into the facility? I'd like to have a little more time, if I may, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is going to take 30 seconds?
I bet.
No problem. When I was last here, the city manager promised to provide the rental agreements for the same reason. Public doesn't have any access to the community park. I said, "Well, that doesn't sound very community friendly." So he said he promised that he would provide me the rental agreements. On the first visit here, he promised he would follow up with me, which he did. But the follow-up consisted of him telling me how much revenue you're making off of their gym. And that's fine. I'm good with that. That's a good thing for the city. But not at the expense of the community, because after all, we did pay for it with tax dollars. So we should have some sort of access to the gym. So I have those two or three questions that I'd really like to get an answer for, not subsequent to tonight's meeting, but hopefully officially from you tonight, Mr. Carmini, because honestly, you haven't responded to either my first or second visit here. And I'm that close to feeling like I'm being discriminated against, maybe because of my participation to City Hall, but I thought that's the invite that you guys made to us residents. So I hate to believe that, but honestly, I can't fathom the idea why I would be denied and my daughter and my sister the ability to partake of the community center. Thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is John Shoemaker, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Herman.
JD, good luck in getting an answer. We're still waiting for the pencil out of the cost of the health department from February of earlier this year. That hasn't happened either. One of the things I wanted to talk about was how, you know, some, well, one member of the council, that whenever they're criticized, started to scream, it's hate speech. Criticism isn't hate speech. You know? So the thing is, though, is the comments that this council member is making, Councilmember Diaz, makes me wonder, is she writing them, or is Bill Elliott writing them, or the pseudo person Nick DiCotto writing them? Because they all sound the same. You know, I just don't understand. The scary part is, if she's writing them, it means that she's been writing Bill Elliott's comments for years. You know, like the, you know, immigrants, illegal immigrants are cockroaches. They just feed off of society. They're not worth anything. You know, that type of thing. Is that what? That, to me, is hate speech. Saying you're not doing your job very well is criticism, and there's a big difference between the two. There's a big difference between the two. So, you know, I'd like to find out, you know, who is doing these things and who is writing them? You know, we had Nick DiCotto, who was supposed to speak at the last meeting, said he was upset because four people were using the F-word and the C-word. I guess the F-word was fun and the C was challenge people. Because the first speaker was the Chair of the Youth Sports Council, who was talking about the high academic standards, the high academic standards that they use in the Bruin football program. Wow, that's nasty. Of course, we had two people who said some things that were wrong. And the fourth one was Elsie Nesman. Those, the first four speakers, you know? I did like the way I was described, the guy with the long flowing gray hair. I thought that was rather nice, personally. But, you know, it's like, come on, folks. You know, when you put things out saying that people are criticizing you, it's not hate speech. You know, a prime example is, there were two council members who took a lot of time getting photo ops for the skate park. What was funny about that is, the day after those photo ops came out, people were saying, "No, it's already been graffitied." How many months have gone by, and it's still not cleaned up again? That's not hate speech. That's just pointing out not doing your job, you know, from that standpoint. You know, and it seems like somebody who claims they were in law enforcement would have pretty thick skin. Would have pretty thick skin, you know, on those things. The other thing I'd like to talk about or ask a question is, the city has decided to hire 10 more maintenance people. Now, the reason so many maintenance people were let go is because it was cheaper, lower cost, and more efficient to farm it out. So are you saying one of two things? Farming it out, contracting it out, wasn't cheaper? Because why would you be hiring more people? You'd be having contractors do that extra work, do that work. So actually, it just tells me one thing. You made a mistake, and it's not cheaper. The other thing I've noticed is, there is nothing, nothing, that has ever come out that says, "Here's what the cost would have been if we'd had people on staff, and this is the cost by farming it out." Same thing with our planning departments. Nothing comes up that says, "What is the cost? And here's how we saved money." Every project I've been in, in my entire life, there was an analysis, did we do it right or not? Do we need to change things? I once had a professor who said, I asked him, "What's better, to have a great plan poorly executed or a horrible plan properly executed?" He said, "A horrible plan properly executed, because you'll figure out you did it wrong and make the necessary changes." You guys did neither one. You had a horrible plan and improperly executed. So let's get together here. Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Herman, followed by Jim Grivitch.
I didn't know you were bringing it off. Okay. Mike Greenspan, and thank you for the prayer and mentioning Jesus. In four days, he will get no Christmas dinner at the Jonathan Club, because he's Jewish, should he be home for Christmas. And if he goes to Tim Tebow's Tim McQuanah Country Club in Joakimville, where the Jaguars lost another football game, Tim Tebow would bodily throw him from the dining room. Jesus is Jewish. Hey, don't ask, don't tell. But people always ask in the 90s, "What would Jesus do?" Well, I'll mention every place he won't get served, because he's Jewish. Now, our first speaker mentioned something about the rec center. And I'm going to talk about something else, the library, but some of the same threads of not being able to use something you're paying for are a common theme. And I got this idea from a book written back in the 60s by an author named John Howard Griffin. The book's called Black Like Me. He got pigmentation done, so the white man would be a black man and go through the deep South and experience what a black man experienced versus how the local rednecks say, "Oh, the blacks and the whites get along just fine together." What a lie. What a big lie. And he goes, one place he goes to, Biloxi, Mississippi. And let me read it from page 83. On November 19th, Negroes weren't permitted to enjoy the beaches. He pointed out the injustice of this policy since the upkeep of the beaches comes from a gasoline tax. Quote, "In other words, every time we buy a gallon of gas, we pay a penny to keep the beach up so the whites can use it," unquote. He said, he added, "Some of the local Negro citizens were considering a project to keep an account of the gasoline they purchased throughout the year, and at the end of that time, demand from the town fathers, either a refund on their gasoline tax or the privilege of using the beaches for which they had paid their fair part." Now, with that rec center, the only way that's going to get opened, well, the speaker kept Exhibit A. He did not delete the video. And I'm sure the judge would like to see that video, too. Judge whoever. This sounds like a good court case. I don't know if Mr. Duarte is ready, as the city attorney, to defend the wrong side in court, but that's the only way the thing's going to get done. And just like the library, all the people that have paid those taxes and for over a year, year and a half, not able to use it, it's time to go to court and just through the county. And guess what city? I'm right in the middle of one that's paying a library tax on their property assessment, and you've had about a year and a half, you couldn't use it. And on a good day, you can maybe use 50%. If you get too close to the library worker, you can't ask a question or for them to help you on the computer, they get away from you. It's like going to a square dance, and you're do-si-doing, right in your own library. Now, when I called Mr. Prang's office, they referred me to the Public Affairs section of the Assessor's Office, Mr. Robert Isuzaki, and he referred me to the Auditor Controller's Office. And he said, "A question about a direct assessment have the tax bill in order to give the exact spelling of item." So this is County Library. And he referred me to LA County Library Services. So one of those things, in order to really undo it all and to figure it out, that's why we have judges in courts of law. It's time for the taxpayers to get together with a class action lawsuit. I'm sure there's plenty of people in that predicament. You start with a couple of lead plaintiffs and maybe put do's one to a million or one to two million, because usually, a lot of lawsuits will be do's one to 10. So when you give the impression that there's probably at least a million or two million potential plaintiffs in the lawsuit against the county. And unlike the Board of Supervisors, where we can't go, guess what? We can all go to the courtroom, just have to remember to wear a mask. They let, so why bang your head against the wall with people that are stubborn, and you could just take it to court and let the judge decide it? It'll cost the government entity time and money, and maybe they'll get their heads out of their ass and put it back on their shoulders and realize, maybe it's not worth all the time and trouble that people are going to take suing us.
Herman, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by R. Robinson.
So, Mayor Dario, what is an actual disruption? It's just a simple presentation you had today, so what's an actual disruption? You didn't see me screaming out in the DMV when you're with your Asian girlfriend, getting her license or ID? So what's the problem? What's the problem, Mayor?
I'll respond when you're finished. Continue.
Yeah, because I think the public would like to know.
It's when you make all the noise, when you're...
Yeah, well, I make noises because I'm fucking bored. Bored of hearing the nonsense about Fauci, your fucked up 46th president, and that dumb black bitch who makes a comment that, "Well, you know who the president is." No, I don't. Because the bottom line, America is not great anymore. America is not great, because if it was so great, if it was so great, people living on the street wouldn't have to beg in America, which has now become a third world country, a pimp poverty country in California, where the demorats continue to ponder, beg, and steal our money, like they're doing in Downey. I sat in a special session where all the union hubs, all the staff of Downey, were all begging to keep the city manager from bail in his position, which is stealing from local government. Now, if I'm a fucking liar, I would ask the mayor to tell me so. But the mayor is a pussy, because he's not going to say to me, "I'm a liar," because I state facts. Facts it, dumb, dumb Biden is dumb. We all hear it. We all see it. And now he's out there with his new puppy, barking in Washington. Woof, 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 woof. Now, if that's the best you can do to make America better, please forgive me. Grow a bigger cock. Grow a bigger dick in government. Because again, the Russians aren't going to take your bullshit. Mr. Wu knows the Chinese ain't going to take your bullshit. And when they come with those missiles, and when they come with their army, and when they come with their billion strong, then you tell me who's going to defend this country? Lying bullshit politicians who tell us to wear a mask? Who tell us that we're on another strain of a pandemic? Really? And we don't have enough sterilization or the so-called test methods to finding out whether or not we have this new COVID? The same strands of the flu can kill a person. The same strands of a flu that can harm us are there. But you don't hear anyone talking about the flu anymore, because the flu, COVID, COVID flu, as far as I'm concerned, is the same fucking shit. So if you're not American enough to fucking die for your country, then stand up for your Over 20 years, I haven't had a flu shot. 20 fucking years. I haven't had my recent COVID shots. I haven't even had but one stupid fucking test, driven that little swab up my nose because some fucking dumb asshole author didn't put a sign where I tripped and fell and broke my finger. And who's responsible for that? Local government. Because it's your responsibility to inform us where we can and should not walk. The same way you're trying to inform us in rules, practice of using a mask, practice of believing that if you don't watch yourself by association with all these groups of people, you're going to come up with something. Well, I figured it out. You're going to come up with one thing, this. And that's, America is fucked up. And I ain't bullshitting, but look, some of you keep lying to your children about Christmas. There's no fucking Christmas. Because if Christmas existed, you never would have put that man by the name of Christ on a stake and had him die, so the Jews could run around saying, "Oh, we just murdered him so we can gain power. We just murdered a man so we could blame it on the Jews." Well, yes, the Jews killed Christ, not the Romans.
Jim Grivitch, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Winwin Zink.
I'm here tonight to talk about the first quarter financial report, city business. First, I would like to thank the staff for responding to the request of the Audit Committee to actually have a first quarter financial report, which hasn't happened in previous years. We appreciate that. The second thing is, I would like to thank the staff for providing the monthly financial reports that were relevant to the first quarter report. Unfortunately, I just got them a couple hours ago, so it was a little hard to do any detailed analysis. So I just took a look at my favorite subject, which is the fire department. And... Uh, and, um, and I guess the, uh, part, it struck me that there was some interesting things in that report, and I think the council possibly could ask some questions, might need to be in executive session because it's actually about the details of what's going on in the fire department. I'm projecting that the fire department will have, uh, a considerable overdraft again this year, just like it always has every year. And of course, the reason, you all know, is overtime, uh, way over budget. But when you look at some of the details, I'd like to suggest that you inquire about industrial accidents. There's going to be a considerable overdraft in that account also. And it's always struck me, is a little bit strange that a relatively small department has a very large industrial accident cost. But, for example, the police have a lot more staff members and a much smaller industrial accident cost. That's just an example. But if you compared it to other departments, you would come up with the same results. I think there needs to be some study done of this subject, uh, some analysis. And publicly, I'm, you know, the public isn't in a position to look at it, so I, because it, that has to be done detailed, person by person. Especially when you're looking at who's working overtime and who's taking industrial accidents, those kinds of things. And I personally was involved in this in my professional career. And it can be a really big problem, especially in a public agency. So that's just an idea for something to look at. Because, as I've said, I think the expenditures are going to be higher. This is mainly based on the October report, uh, October monthly report, which wasn't in the first quarter report. Then, and your, the city's overdraft for the year is going to be a lot higher than is currently projected. And I think this council wants expenditures to balance revenue at the end of the year. And the way to deal with that is now, uh, when the year isn't over with, you know, we've got enough time to deal with it. Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by Wenwen Zeng.
Happy New Year, Council. Bill Robinson, resident. I want to quote from Article One, Section One of the California Constitution. "All people are by nature free and independent and have inalienable, inalienable rights. Among these are enjoying and defending life and liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety, happiness, and privacy." That's right, I said privacy. Well, uh, privacy doesn't include, uh, I think medical privacy is included in, under privacy, and, uh, we're receiving medical tyranny. Two weeks ago, I, I went to Mount SAC Library. Two years ago that, I mean, two weeks ago. Two years ago, that was a public space. Now to get in the library, you need a QR code. So, um, Mount SAC Library and the school is following in the footsteps of Adolf Hitler and Gavin Newsom. You know, it's, it's, you know, big changes are happening. I, I, I've been negligent, I, I should have said this many months ago, but I admire anyone who is a critical thinker, they deserve respect, uh, uh, you know, people that expect you to be able to verify any reported facts that you state. So my negligence in these past months is stating that if you try to verify what I'm saying, uh, don't use the, the Google search engine. It's a, it's a search engine and a profiling device, and if Google doesn't want you to find something, uh, believe me, you're not going to find it. The better idea is to use a, a search engine called DuckDuckGo. They don't profile you and, uh, you, they don't choose things that they want you to find and things that they don't want you to find. So, uh, you're, you're free to follow your mind and, and, and choose what you want, uh, the facts that you want to follow up. Switching the subject slightly, uh, two years ago, they needed to manufacture an epidemic to cure a problem that could have been cured by two cheap meds like hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. The scam that we've been enduring for, for two years has, has four pillars. The first pillar is, uh, the, the virus was never isolated or purified. Second pillar is genomic sequencing. They uploaded sequents, sequences by cut and paste of random gene fragments, and by manipulating that, uh, they used it to, uh, to manufacturing a vaccine, which when you, is injected, it forces your body to make spike proteins, which, uh, unbalance your immune system and, and aren't good for you. The, the third pillar is, uh, the PCR testing. That has, can't ever be used for diagnosis. They used it for diagnosis and positives in order to stampede people to believe we were having a real epidemic instead of a manipulation of data and a, a scam epidemic. The fourth pillar is the data manipulation by, uh, public health modeling. That also was fear mongering, and the models were ridiculous, and anyway, they got the American population, uh, can, uh, to, to accept an alternate reality. So we've been living with that for, for two years, and I'm hoping that, uh, in the next year, people will, uh, you know, Mark Twain says it's easier to fool people than to, to show them that they're being fooled. People don't like to be tricked and admit that they're being tricked, but-
Thank you.
We've had two years of, uh-
Wenwen Zeng.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Mr. City Manager, and everyone in the audience and watching at home. My name is Wenwen Zhang, and I'm the West Covina Library Manager. Um, well, uh, West Covina Library is currently closed with no in-person service, um, for deferred maintenance and refurbishment. I apologize for any inconvenience this may cause. We, however, during the library closure, we continue to provide sidewalk service and phone service Monday through Friday, um, ten AM to six PM, where a customer can pick up their reserved materials, library books and the materials at the sidewalk. And a customer can, um, uh, reserve the materials using the online catalog, or can, they can call the library, will be more than happy to, uh, look up the library books and the materials and place on hold and arrange pickup when they're available. If a customer needed to use in-person service, let's say, uh, they need a public computer printer or a copy machine or need a place to read and study, um, all libraries, all county libraries are open with in-person service, and they can, uh, visit a neighboring library. And, uh, the libraries in our hood, uh, in our neighborhood include, um, Bullring Park Library, which is only two miles from here, and also La Puente and, um, Sankis Library in the city of La Puente, and also El Mardi Library, Warner Library, Hazaan Library, all libraries are open. For return of materials, the library book jobs outside the library, they are open all the time, twenty-four seven. And, um, so, and also the library will continue to provide, um, information and reference services through, um, telephone, not telephone. And we also ordered, um, text forms and booklets, and starting from February, January, if you need, um, text forms, you can come to the library and pick them up. And the library also, uh, provide virtual programs for all ages, from, you know, from baby to adults, there are different kinds, and please check online to see the schedules. And, um, and also the library provide, um, uh, tons of, uh, online, um, resources, eBooks, download notebooks, and also the library, um, you can, we also have laptop and hotspot kits for customers to check out. If you did it, please let us know, call us, we can reserve them for you to pick up. And, um, well, I, uh, here, I'm, on behalf of the staff of West Covina Library, I wish you all and your family a very happy holiday season and a most prosperous and a healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. City Manager, uh, would you please respond to public comment concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Members of the public, I'd like to thank all the speakers for taking the time during the busy holiday season to come out tonight, as always. Appreciate them being here. Mr. Daru asked some questions about rec policies and schedules. I will just say briefly, you generally do need to have the parents' permission to, to photograph kids. Safety of the children in our programs is our number one priority, but I will have somebody respond to you directly, um, right away, um, tomorrow regarding the questions about the policies and the schedules. Mr. Schumaker asked about Health Department costs. There's been one contract let to this moment with TransTech, it's for ninety-eight thousand dollars. We continue to have meetings with the California Department of Public Health, there's another one happening, um, this week. And if they do grant provisional approval, there will need to be some consideration of Phase Two costs to comply with, um, state regulations. We will, um, bring those on an agenda for any future decisions about that. I don't believe there's anything for me to respond to from Mr. Greenspan or Mr. Armando Herman. Mr. Grivitch, you're welcome for those reports. I'm happy to also share, we do have information, we have data about our injured on duty costs as part of our overall, um, risk management program, and I'm happy to share that information with you as well. I don't remember anything Mr. Robinson was asking in terms of service requests or, or information tonight. And a special thank you to Wenwen for being here, as always, from the county. We really appreciate your coming and sharing information about library services. Thank you very much. I think that's all I've got this evening.
Thank you, City Manager. So no City Manager report for today, for this evening, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Council, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent-
I want to pull, okay, Agenda Number Two, please.
Okay, Councilman Wu will pull Number Two. I'd like to pull Number Three. Councilman Tabai.
Yeah, um, Mayor, is it, is it okay? I, I did have a question about Cameron, Cameron Park before we get to, to the consent. Could, could I-
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, so City, City Manager, do, do we not have in, information about the public access to the, to the rec center? I, I know my, my son's involved with some of the, the private things that go on, he's into gymnastics at Cameron Park, um, but I know that the, the public is interested in, in the rec center. Do we not have any information for just the public in general regarding access to that?
Through the chair, if I may. One of the reasons I wanted to respond directly from staff to the gentleman that asked the questions about the, the rec programs is, maybe it's information he needs to hear but wouldn't want to hear. I did say earlier this evening that the safety of children in our rec programs is our number one concern, and we work hard to protect that. Because the speaker isn't a parent of, um, a participant of those particular activities, it would be very hard for me to say that he was, um, that he had obtained permission to photograph them. So we, we generally don't allow that. For example, for most of our programs, we would, we would require or get a release from the parents. So if your, if your son is there, makes me very happy that he's participating, but we would protect his interests and not just allow someone. If, if this gentleman got escorted out by the police, I'm sure there was a reason, but we will respond to him further and directly. You're asking about schedules, you're asking about-
Ping pong and-
Policies.
And pool table and-
That particular day, we only had leased events, rented events, scheduled events at the rec center. We had really two popular community-wide events going on that weekend. We had Friday night, the tree lighting, which is a real bright spot, and kudos to our Assistant City Manager for doing it. The next morning, we were all at the children's parade and at the Santa's Village. So when that call came in, we did have some brief conversation with the staff that was working that day, but I'll get back to you with your questions about what our policies are as we continue to reopen our facilities. We're, we're figuring that out, and I'll, I'll owe you that, if I may.
Okay. So just as, as of now, though, the, the public should, should see them as, as closed? The, the, the open access?
I, I would characterize them as reopening, and we're working hard to afford the public access to the facilities. You talk about ping pong, it seems simple, but who's, who's using the equipment, how do you sanitize it in between, et cetera? So a lot of that is being decided as we reopen and bring those facilities back. We'll, um, we'll report back to Council about that, um, directly.
Councilman Wu.
Yes, I want to follow up, okay, Councilman Tabai, Tabai regarding the recreation service facility and the what, okay, when, okay, we can, they can, or anybody can utilize. I think we need to have a policy, and we need to have a clear policy, okay, and, okay, and posted, okay, on the, so people can read, so who can use, when we can use, okay? And now in that, we have so many facility, we have Cameron, we have, uh, Senior Centers, okay, and, and I know they have a lime dance over there, and then we have Shadow, okay? So we have quite a few, okay, of facility, we need to set up our policy and who can rent, okay, when can, they can. I think I went with, uh, okay, Councilwoman, okay, and, uh, Diaz, uh, we went to just, surprisingly, just show up, okay, we want, and this is nobody inside, it's, it's during the weekday, okay, I think I forgot the noon time or mornin' or something, mornin', like ten o'clock. And so we talked to the staff and we see exactly what JD talking about, the block. So we say when we can use it, but he talking about due to sanitation issue. So again, we need to have a policy to have our resident, no matter who they are, to see what they can use. Okay, and I know we already have our new Assistant City Manager, Razan, and then I know we kind of push her to do a lot of stuff, okay, but hopefully she can survey, okay, entire facility and set up with the staff to set up the policy and, and now we have some kind of another strain of, uh, virus, and, uh, now we have to survey, okay, how we can do and to deal with public, to be public safety at the same time. We need to have people can utilize, okay, the public facility. I agree, okay, this is a public, okay, money to do, okay, and the, the park and the facility, we need to let our public to know when they can utilize and set the policy and post, okay, on our website and, uh, and the entrance of facility so people can understand, we have a rule for that. So then we can basically dissolve all this dispute. Make sense?
Through the chair, certainly. I understand and I agree. Open Gym is definitely back, this information has been posted on the city's website since October, and I believe he was asking about some other kinds of policies, and I will respond to him directly as well as to the council.
And it's, it's not for JD.
I understand.
For the public.
Yeah, please, okay, I, I, JD says, we should, you guys have to resolve it, I'm talking to the public in general.
Yes, sir.
And then we need to have a policy, we need a post on the facility, like my office, we post if we close this and that, so people know when we, they can utilize, coming in otherwise, or they have to wear a mask. otherwise, or they have the wear mask, something like over here. So we post who can use. Make sense, City Manager?
Absolutely, I understand, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Okay, and I was you that day, I think the staff talk about, the difficulty is because all this equipment, and you give to them, who's going to sanitize all those equipment? It is why you told us, okay, and then when I say a waiver, okay, and they print their own, okay, and sanitation lotion or something, okay, so they can, so what I'm saying is just, again, we have to find a way, the policy, okay, and then, okay, can we open, or you have to check with now the new guideline for the, which they don't have a Health Department, so we stay under the guideline of our County Health Department, see, and the state, and the federal, see what we cooperate to hopefully keep everybody safe. At the same time, we want people to utilize the space and the service. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tabatai?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, to agree with my fellow council members, I think one of the issues also is an inconsistency, right? So my son is using that gymnastics, and he's touching all kinds of things, and all kinds of things are, right, being used, and then you're someone of the public who's coming in, and then you're being told, well, no, we can't use the ping pong table because it needs to be sanitized, as you're watching all around you, right, everything being used. And so again, you know, this does need to be clear to the public, and again, if we are going to be renting these facilities out, then the public needs to be able to use them.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Yeah, so how soon we can get all this policy, okay, put it together, we need the timeline?
Through the chair. It's not on your agenda tonight to be deciding about policies. Our Assistant City Manager is here. If you want, we could invite her to come down to the microphone, we could just talk about these things as information, but not for Council action because it's not on your agenda.
Is information only?
If that's acceptable, we'll welcome her to the microphone and just talk about these things, we'll get a snapshot of kind of where we are. So Roxanne, thank you very much.
I will fix it. So to answer, through the chair, if I may, so to answer your questions regarding the timeline for reviewing the policies and establishing the policies, you're absolutely right, because we are still under the county's jurisdiction for the Health Department, it is a matter of comparing those policies, or excuse me, those guidances, those guidelines, with what we can actually do in those spaces and in those facilities. It's been my experience that when we're reviewing those types of guidances from the Health Department, it's really based on the type of activity and the maximum occupancy. So every type of activity that is assigned to an area is also assigned a risk level. So I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Tabatai, as well as the rest of the City Council, you know, taking a look at what those inconsistencies are. We will absolutely do that, we will address the issues, and we are happy to come back to Council with a report, a reopening report, so that we can make you as well as the public aware of what we are doing moving forward, balancing, you know, the safety as well as accessibility to the facility, so that the community needs are met.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, back to the consent calendar. So we've got Councilman Wu pulling Number 2, I'll be pulling Number 3.
Okay, I just need some education on this agenda.
Well, first we'll vote on-
Through the chair, if we could-
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The remaining.
Get a motion to approve item number one.
The lone, lone item, number one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Tabatai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Costellanos, thank you.
Number 1 passes 4-0, bringing us to Number 2, Finance Department.
Welcome back, Director.
See, I know this is your swan dance, but I won't let you free. Okay, I want you to continue to educate us. Okay, I really kind of confused, okay, about this Agenda Number 2, okay, because we have $19 million, it's enforceable liability, okay, and a lot of bond. So maybe you can kind of, can clarify to the Council, okay, educate us about what is the point come, what is the risk, and, okay, so we can, okay, be careful on all this $19 million liability with a lot of events from the, we develop an agency, become successor agency, and a lot of things from our property tax. And in 2008, Governor Brown, okay, Brown already dissolved, okay, we develop agency, so basically, city don't have any money, so all this bond, we become successor agency, okay, we become our liability with all the tax agency. So it's very complicated, okay, so maybe you can make it sweet and short and simple to let us understand. I know you can do it, okay, thank you.
Okay, there we go. So back in 2012, the redevelopment agencies across the state of California were dissolved by Governor Jerry Brown at the time, and so it became successor agency, and there's a lot of complicated rules with it, but the way it is right now is we're winding down our redevelopment agency, and we have approved obligations that the Department of Finance has approved, and annually, we have to submit to them our report, and then they'll give us a letter in April whether or not they accept those obligations that we list on this report, that I've listed for this 19 million, and they'll come back with some number less than this number, they always do. So we get our payments on these twice a year, once in June and once in January, and this particular report is actually for the 2223 year, and it's due by February 1st to the Department of Finance.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, so my understanding, okay, with this $19 million bond, and we try to pursue the state of finance that they owe us money, am I right? Okay, and they need to pay us back because they charge from property tax, but they never give back to us.
So, so there's two bond issues that are listed on this, well, actually three. There's the Community Facilities District, which is the mall, and there's the 2000s-
Regarding the mall, it's Plaza West Covina, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I know they haven't paid our taxes for 20 years? Since they, when they built, I think they built in 2000 from the redevelopment project that we using this redevelopment agency funding to help them, and then we give them the tax break. I'm talking about when they built, okay, I think it's based back on 2005, 2000-
Councilman Wu, I believe the bonds were issued for the, back in the 70s, 80s.
Yeah, but, but my understanding, okay, we set up, okay, we don't get a tax till, what, 2022 September?
We still get property tax and sales tax that goes to the CFD to pay off. Paulina's correct that they were issued back in 70s, 80s, but they've been refinanced since then, and they're in the 1996 bonds now. Those will be paid off in September of '22, so next September.
September '22, that we will get our sales tax from the Plaza West Covina?
Yes.
So how much we should receive? Finally, we can get some sales tax from them.
It's between, off the top of my head, I think we budget 1.2, but I think it comes in higher than that, 1.5 to 1.6.
So we're going to have 1.5 once, 1.6?
I don't think it did last year because of COVID.
Yeah, I understand, okay, so we're going to have roughly 1.5 million dollar extra income annually come to us, am I right?
Not extra, additional.
Additional, okay, not extra, additional, but at least to make us happy that we finally, okay, after this redevelopment agency project that we started, receive taxes, okay, and that's how important for us, hey, every penny come, okay? And so this is the thing, but I think the state still owes all this bond money, that's why, remember, we are trying to pursue for the state, that's what I think Paulina told us regarding what we should pursue for the, what, $19 million or $50 million from the state of finance?
So there's-
Department of Finance, you go ahead.
Councilmember Wu and Councilmembers, there are various obligations on the ROPS line items that we are requesting. Some of them are items that we've, have been requesting from DOF and have been trying to work through to get approval. One of that, I believe, is you're referring to the reimbursement tax agreement, and it's a very convoluted agreement between the city, the successor agency, and the Board of Equalization. And so we're trying to get that recognized as an enforceable obligation so that the Department of Finance will approve the reimbursement back to-
So how much totally, okay, if we can, if they can approve and reimburse back to us? I think 1.60, $15 million or?
It was 30 from what I recall.
$30 million?
I believe it's around 30.
$30 million?
December.
Now, how realistic we can get this money back to the city? And how soon?
That's something we're working towards.
Huh?
That's something that we're trying to work towards.
So I know we've been pursued since I sit on the Council seat for six years, I know we've been pursuing, but how soon, we work on this for six years, and then you still with us, okay, how soon, okay? So we've been, okay, pursued from the, okay, State Department of Finance, so when and what we need to make sure they will pay us back?
We're working with the city attorney's office in legislative fix in regards to this specific line item. As I mentioned, the agreement is between various entities, the requirements of the dissolution act for redevelopment specifies very, a checkbox of items that have to occur in order for them to consider it an obligation, enforceable obligation.
So we still need a legislature, meaning our Senate or Assembly, right?
We're hoping that that's a method to getting it approved.
So we have to united to ask our Senate or Assembly to make sure they can help us to get this money back.
Like I said, to get the checkmark for this particular item, we would assist-
Because the election is coming up, they better to do it, so otherwise, we're not going to vote for them, right? That's why we need-
We need help, we appreciate it.
Legislation to be made to accommodate the acknowledgement of that obligation, correct?
Correct. The structure of the agreement is very unique, it utilized a law that no longer exists today, but it was done legally. But because we utilize that law that doesn't exist today, it doesn't, we can't checkmark that box that the Department of Finance needs.
So we need our legislatures to, our Senate or Assembly to help us, can we give them a clear direction, so our attorney, Tom, right? So in that way, we can give them what we need so they can help us, okay, and that's why we have a representative in Sacramento, that's why we have them, otherwise, what's the point, right? So can we give a clear direction? Okay, so, thank you. So next question I have, so please work on that, $30 million is a lot of money, okay, that's a lot of overtime, okay? So, so a next thing I want to ask about the bond, I remember doing the couple years ago, they refinanced the bond. So, so if we have all this, like golf course bond and a couple of our municipal bond, can you see, and if you want to pay off, do we have any penalty that we can worry about? Because some of the, it's all from this report.
No, those bonds are the 2018 bonds, and they combined the 2004s, got off the top of my head now, the 2002s, I believe, and there was one other, no, not six, one other bond issue that combined all of those into the 2018s. That money comes from the general fund today, and-
The general fund bond?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the successor agency in this report.
Got it, okay, so that is a general fund bond, so if we can pay off, then we will reduce our general fund liability.
Yes, and I believe that previously, I've been told that Council has directed that when we sell the BKK property, that that money will go back, part of it will go back to pay the bonds, that's about $8 million right now for those, and even if there is, there's always a call date on those, so I'm not sure what the call date is, but we can always set that money aside to call it when it, when it does come due.
It's not we request, it's an oversight board, okay, requirement when they decide to grant $1 to successor agency to us, okay, and so, but the requirement that we have to pay off the bond, okay, so there's a requirement. So if somebody purchased BKK with that bond, we owe like 30.5 million dollars started, plus our interest, we almost paid $20 million already, they need to be paid off, okay, if anybody pay off, because this is a bond called the San Jose Golf Course Bond, okay, right? That's my understanding, that anybody, if you want to buy this development, this is redevelopment agency, we are successor agency to build this golf course, okay, and this costs us almost $20 million, and we still have a bond left over for $8, $9 million, and we have to pay off.
Correct, so Mayor and Councilmembers, as part of the approval from the Oversight Board to sell the successor agency assets to the city for a dollar each, it did stipulate that the city could be reimbursed for the bonds and any interest on those bonds that the city paid. Anything above that from the land proceeds would have to be shared amongst the taxing entities.
Okay, got it, okay, and for the $19 million, this is, okay, okay, basically enforcement liability, this is, this basically is the bond, it's not from general fund, okay, this is from the, okay, redevelopment agency for successor agency bond?
The successor agency bonds, and those consist of the 2006s, that's what we used to refer to as Big League Dreams, and the 2017s, that's the ones that you were talking about that were refinanced in 2017, and that was a refinance that went through the county. And then there's the 96 bonds, which I mentioned, will be paid off in September of '22.
Very good, thank you so much, very clear now, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on Number 2? Nope, okay.
Move the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Costellanos. Councilmember Tabatai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. Takes us to number, item number 3, again, for our Finance Director. Would you please give us a report on the first quarter financials?
Thank you, City Council. I'm going to ask Stephanie Sicamara, Assistant Finance Director, to give that report, she prepared it, but just the gist of it, it's the first quarter through September 30th, we're revising some of the numbers, and one of the reasons I don't like to do a first quarter report is there's so little data on the revenue side, we don't have any property tax in at that time, we don't have, we have like one month of sales tax, so you can't really conclude anything from that. But we are seeing the numbers rising, so we're making some adjustments to the revenues, and I suspect that when you get the second quarter, that it will be revised even further. you get the second quarter, that it will be revised even further. And with that, I'm going to let Stephanie come down and give the report.
Thank you, Robin, and welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening. I will just be brief and touch on some highlights from it. So overall, during the first quarter, revenue less expenditures are down about 15 million. But this is typical, as Robin had mentioned, for this time of year. And when you look historically, we're actually higher than we were last year. So that's a good sign moving forward. As Robin mentioned, we haven't received a lot of our funds. In fact, we got the first distribution of property tax today, so that will be reflected on the next quarter. Sales tax projections, however, for the last few quarters have been up, so we should see that increase hopefully as people are returning to normal over this fiscal year. Attached to this financial report is also a budget amendment, which is proposing to increase overall by 1.3 million to the general fund, based on increased productions in revenue and then some offsetting expenditures. So with that, I can take any questions.
Councilman Wu?
You know, based on my understanding, okay, and I know this is the first quarter from, okay, July 1st to October 31st, right?
September.
No, September 30th. Okay, so the first quarter, I understand it, because, okay, maybe in January, we can have a much better number, right? So we can see how strong financially the city due to, because you only have two things. You have expenditure, and you have an income, and how you, okay, spend the money, and at the same time, how much money you bring in, just like typical household, okay, how much you bring in, how much you spend the money. So, but again, based on what we see, okay, with a property tax increase like 20% in, I think more than that in West Covina, it's like picking 30%. So, and you don't even have inventory. At the same time, the sales, okay, sales tax, okay, including Amazon, okay, with a lot of people older like crazy, including my daughter, my kid, okay, that's like nonstop. We just, my home become like a warehouse. So because everybody buying, so you can see that every time I went through, okay, the freeway, I see, okay, our shopping mall, West Covina Plaza, is a mall, is full of car. So that can see that is a good income. But the question will be, I want to go with what Jim, okay, talking about, okay, our expenditure, okay, expenditure about, okay, overtime. So what kind of area we can kind of look into to help out, we still have to control our spending. At the same time, we want to increase our revenue coming in. Like next year, we're going to September, we're going to have possible 1.5 million dollars. So we need to, okay, see how we control as, okay, in the future with more revenue, including all the development we approve, and it's starting going on. Then we're going to have a property tax coming in, and then we have their fee schedule and etc., etc., permit fees. So I can see, okay, we should have a lot of income. And my understanding from Robin, okay, from '19 to '20, okay, budget is enough surplus, right?
So we're working on the draft comprehensive annual financial report right now, but we did get a draft, and the reserves have gone from 12.5 million in '19, '20, and in this current report, it goes up to 21.4 million.
21? Wow.
I think it was 21.4.
21.4 million? Holy micro. So many, I don't think we have these numbers for what, maybe Paulina can tell us. I think we have this money for 20 years. Okay, normally we only have like-
Never seen that kind of money.
We only have like $15 million. We're down to 9 point some million dollars. Now we go up to $22 million roughly, okay, up and down. Okay, so it's a very good news. Okay, so, and so can we look into the, even we making good money, but still, we have to see how we control the expenditure? Can we look into that area?
Yes. So overall, all, seven out of the nine departments were, are trending on budget at 25%, where you would expect them for, for the quarter. Mr. Grivage is correct, the fire department is over in overtime, so we are seeing that spike again. And so staff is closely watching that, and each payroll actually provides reports in reflection of that. The other department that's up is the Human Resources Department, and that's mainly for professional services and contracted services that are arising, in which they need assistance for. So we are tracking those two departments, but the other departments are trending on budget as of the end of the 30th.
So everybody kind of stay with their budget, right?
As of the 30th of September.
Oh.
As we move on to the next part of the year.
So all the department is like work with the city, work with you guys, and work with the taxpayer, try to control their budget?
So far for the year.
So far. Don't know the future yet.
It's too, it's really, as Robin said, the first quarter is really just a quick snapshot because we're just starting to pay expenditures for the first part of the year, and then we have a huge lag on revenue, so.
Yes, 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 okay. But again, we don't want to tell people too much about we are rich, okay? No, listen, no, we just, okay. But thank you so much. It's, okay.
Thank you. That's really good news, but as you just said, given the variability in potential expenditures, and, you know, as we've seen in the past, a lot of things could blindside us. I think we still need to be vigilant and continue on this path of good fiscal management. So thank you for your work. Thank you, Robin, very much. We really appreciate it. Let's see, we actually have something to present.
Oh, not yet. I have some-
Okay, you have some more questions?
Yeah, okay. So we don't, no, no, you stay, okay. Please, okay, thank you so much, okay. And then I know it's kind of a strong dance for our beloved, okay, and the Finance Directors, okay. And I just wanted to say quickly, and we are so appreciate, so fortunately, to have you, okay, to work for us. I know this is your last meeting with us, and I was like begging for a couple of months. I said, please don't go, please, please, okay? Don't break my heart, but I know. And in 2019, okay, when we have a day company in April, and they commonly introduce in May, I think, the early May 1st or end of April, and you introduce Robin, okay, and Robin's already retired, okay, and Robin said, I can help you with six months to end of the years to kind of help you straight up the city. And then we begging you say, hey, we need a good Finance Director to kind of clean up the city mess, okay? It's a mess, I know it, because I was there for that times, like what, three years, four years? I know how horrible. I went through all the different Finance Directors, they don't even know what fund balance, okay? I asked about how much money we have in the bank, and she cannot even answer. So we went through three, four different Finance Directors, okay, or consultants, okay. Finally, we have Robin, okay, and Robin saved the city, cleaned up all the department, and bring you in. And when she bring you in, I already know she's tried to exit, okay? She find, she's so responsible, and she loved the city, okay, so much, okay? She works out in Sunday, okay, and she worked so hard to kind of help her to become what we, okay, have today. So I think West Covina, in depth to your hard work, okay, to help the city, because city, most important thing is finance, okay? Besides, because we love money, how you pay for your public safety? How you pay for your service? So we need to have a strong finance, and a strong finance, you need to have a strong Finance Director, understand what, okay, she's doing. And she's doing, okay, such a wonderful job, and cleaning up the mess of ages, okay? It's not only from previous administration, it's coming from 10, 20 years of kick, the can down the road, okay, and never been really fixed, okay, until Robin, okay, and helping us. And I said, would you please just stay with us for another year? And he said, nope, Tony, get out my face, okay? And I'm going to enjoy my retirement, okay? And he, she did good, okay? I want to show my deepest appreciation, represent my taxpayer, okay, to thank you, to thank you so much, okay, to stay with you almost three years, okay, two years and eight months, okay, and help us, okay, to make the city great again. And now in that, you bring your replacement, okay, and Stephanie. Stephanie, we kind of work with you, we already know your ability, okay, to do it. You like, I don't want to say younger, but the smaller size of Robin, okay? But thank you so much for two of you to come to help us. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. I'd like to share that sentiment. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Stephanie, for being with us and being ready to take over and continue on our path. So would any of my fellow council members like to add anything? Mayor Protem? Thank you. Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, again, I'd also like to thank you. I really appreciate it. You're always straightforward, and you are not afraid to give the answer that needs to be given. And that's what a Finance Director really needs to be able to do. You've really shown a lot of strength in your position, a lot of integrity. And again, when you're dealing with finance, I mean, that is the number one characteristic you need in a Finance Director, and you've exemplified that. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you've given for the city, for the residents, and what you've taught me in my year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilman Wu, or nothing further than now, I'd like to call Robin up to the microphone.
Excuse me, through the chair, I do need a motion. We do have a resolution for a budget amendment on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Costelanos. Do I have a second? Thank you. Second by Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costelanos?
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that 4-0 pass, I would like to request the council join us out there. Photo up. Someone getting it for you?
Yes.
I just want to say, I want to thank the City Council. This has been one of the most special places I've been in my career. I've never had so much support from the City Council. And like most of the council has said, when I got here, I was hired to clean things up. A lot of that, you know, then COVID hit, and a lot of that took time because we had very little staff in-house. But since Stephanie's been here, we've managed to clean the books up this year's audit, I think proves that. We've managed to grow the reserves phenomenally, and I know I'm leaving the city in good hands. I couldn't walk out the door if I wasn't sure that I had somebody to replace me. And I just want to say Stephanie has been, her and I have like mind. So I know she's going to carry on the work that I've done, and we, just this week, the new Assistant Finance Director has started. So there's not going to be a lull there in a vacancy that's going to hold Stephanie back. We picked the number two person, she was on the list, and she was a very close second with Stephanie, and I think they're going to make a good team. And I know West Covina is in good hands, and I want to thank everybody for this experience. It's been a great pleasure.
Great moment for all of us. Okay, so number three, we passed that 4-0. Now on to mayor or council reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
AB 123, no.
None of that. Council requests?
I don't have a request, I only have a comment.
Okay, then we'll move on to comments. Councilman Wu?
Okay, I'll do it quickly, okay? Just want to say thank you for our city staff. Thank you for our new Assistant City Managers to put the first annual tree lighting event and moving, I don't know how many tons of snow, okay, and a lot of kids is very, very happy. And of course, we have a room for improvement, but just for those activities, such a short time to put it together and make all the children very happy, I think that is something what this city is about, okay? We want to bring, okay, unity, we want to bring entertainment, we want to bring event, okay? And I want to thank Mayor to put the tree lighting, okay, and to put this, okay, tree, okay, and make everybody have a hope of 2020. And I think this is important. Second thing is about the children, okay, Christmas parade, unbelievable, successful. You see the picture from Tribune, it's like Pasadena, okay, all for that kind of parade, and the children is very, very proud and happy. And I want to thank Kiwanee Club, okay, and I want to thank Brad, Ken, okay, our dear team to put this together for the, I think the third times, okay, and very, very successful, okay, and the Center Village for people with all the performance, and that is make our city so proud. We're proud to have all, okay, this activity, and I think we're going to have more activity. But I just want to thank the staff, okay? I think a lot of staff working so hard, okay, and put it together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. Mayor Protem Diaz?
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe New Years. And I want to thank our staff for a wonderful year that we had this year. I think we made a lot of progress, and I'm looking forward to next year. I think it's going to be much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, what Councilman Wu said regarding the events, just beautiful job, staff, fantastic, community was wonderful. I also wanted to acknowledge Joey Mancuso of Anna's Pizza had had a great event over in Glendora with all the small businesses and restaurant, but then he had his outdoor television stolen. But Greg Carlos of The Cove, I wanted to acknowledge, replaced that TV. And I wanted to point it out, just because the small businesses in the lakes, they really, you know, being around them, there's really a family atmosphere with those business owners. And so all of you who are going to West Covina Mall to shop, hopefully all of you are still doing Christmas shopping, and after Christmas still shop. But when you need a break, go to those restaurants on Glendora and have a drink at The Cove, because what Greg did and just what- and just what those business owners have done to support each other has been wonderful. I also wanted to just mention new superintendent of West Covina Unified School District, Emmy Flores, Dr. Emmy Flores, it's a wonderful time in West Covina, a lot of great things are happening, and one of our school districts is also, you know, just rising with us. And finally, Northview, I'm a football coach, and I just want to acknowledge the Northview High School Football Team, which is Covina Valley Unified, a lot of West Covina residents choose to go to Northview and are on that football team, they won CIF and they made it to the state final, came up a little short, but Coach Marcel Perez and that staff, I just wanted to acknowledge them and congratulations. And to my council members, thank you for a wonderful year, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and I really look forward to 2022.
Thank you, Councilman Tabataba, I'll echo the sentiment, I'm very grateful to our city staff, our city employees in every department, doing what needs to be done to get us through the tough times we faced, not only with the pandemic, but before we got started as this team, which is going great, we've seen a lot of progress, we want to keep it going, and I look forward to everyone doing their part, and thank you, staff, and thank you, council. Merry Christmas and happy holidays and happy new year to everybody. Councilman Wu, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor, okay, I put my heads up, so I want to, most important thing, at this holiday, okay, no matter what this and that, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, no matter who you are, you deserve the best wishes, okay, I want, make sure everybody healthy and magnificent 2022. And we need to kick this pandemic, we need to have people, okay, and, okay, willing to, okay, united, okay, most important thing, continue to, okay, work together to help each other, not only to improve our city, but most important, to make your family together, and help our children to have their future, okay, and congratulations for the West Covina Unified School have a new superintendent, and wish she will do great for our school district. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank you so much for this wonderful 2021, and I want to thank you to staff, thank you to management team, and all the staff on the street, and help to keep us safe. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. Looks like no more comments, so with that, we're adjourned for the year.